Yeah, it was busy like when I got on, I was tired.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know what's going on. Okay. That's right.
Crickets.
I love the colors of the colors.
Trying to get Anna's attention.
And you're lonely.
Welcome to tonight's Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 City Council meeting. Called a meeting to order. First order of business is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. I would ask that you arrange standing after our invocation. And tonight we have with us Bill Hindley. I hope I said that right, Bill, sorry. From our First Presbyterian Church. Did I say it right?
Hindley.
Hindley.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Our most gracious God, we come before you this evening praising you for your wonderful goodness and mercy that you pour down upon us. We thank you for your grace. We ask you for your wisdom for the leaders of this city assembled here tonight. We ask that they listen to your still small voice to know the right course of action in all matters. We ask for compassion for the needy, rest for the weary, and strength for us all. We ask your blessing upon this meeting and every individual present here tonight. We ask you for your blessing upon our community, our state, and our nation. We ask that you bless our entire world with your glory. We pray in the powerful name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hindley. Did I get it right that time? And Matt, thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is, or second, third item actually, is the roll call. Let the roll call show everyone is present. I know Jeff has a board meeting tonight, so I'd ask for somebody to give him an excuse.
Move to excuse.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to excuse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Lavender is excused. Next is our minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move to consider the approval of the City Council's regular meeting minutes of August 21st, 2023, and accept for the record the Board of Adjustment meeting, June 13th, 2023, the Historical Preservation Regular Meeting of June 26th, 2023, and that's it.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Next is claims against the city. Mr. Lavender isn't here.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims for August 16th through 29th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Claims are approved. The meeting agenda approval. Does anybody have any changes?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing no changes then, and I don't think there's, I don't have a study session, so I don't need to move any meetings or any reports. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda is approved as presented. We do have some special presentations tonight. The first is swearing in of two new officers that are, as I understand, they live here in Casa Grande. Love to see that. Congratulations to both of you. Thank you both. Well, we ain't sworn in yet, so we'll congratulate you when you're done, but please come on Next, we have a retirement. up.
I'm Susan.
I'm Steven.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
Like to support the Constitution.
I support the Constitution.
After 30 years of service, I think she's created a new, it's a new like CG gang sign.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
CJ 30.
And I will bear two faiths.
I will bear two faiths.
Is that, that's the new sign.
And the allegiance to the states.
Is that it?
And the allegiance to the states.
LC 30.
And defending against all enemies.
I've seen pictures. Come on down, TJ.
And defending against all enemies.
So, I want congratulations. An amazing career with the city.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And you're not going to be town, right?
And the rightful, faithfully.
And the faithful.
And impartially.
So at least we're still happy to be here.
And impartially.
To the sports duties of police officer.
To the sports duties of police officer.
So I know Scott always does a great job of kind of encouraging those who are going
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
through this, but this retirement condition this evening, it's like every time we have one from the Community Services Department, he follows and plays with it every time in the city. So it must be great to work with. If you ever want to go to work in the city, go to work for the Community Services Department because they have all the fun. So, and again, such is the case tonight for Lydia Perdova, who retired last Friday, actually, after 30 years of service with the city. So again, congratulations. Amazing. Lydia was hired on August 23rd, 1993, in what was called Parks and Recreation Department. She graduated now from Community Services. She was promoted to administrative assistant in July of '07, serving for five different department directors. I know all of them have them. They're crazy because I knew them. Four different office locations. So Lydia really has seen the evolution of our community services department, city and organization. So congratulations. Lydia, on behalf of my fellow council members, the city and citizens who have worked for all these 30 years, congratulations.
And Lydia, before you go, I just wanted to personally, you know, I raised three kids in the Parks and Rec Department, and Lydia, you know, they're 25 to 30 years old. And I just remember always going in there and you helping us with all the different activities and registering and all your help. And so it's just so hard to believe it's been 30 years, but I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of the parents out there that you have helped so much because those programs are really important for our kids, well, really all ages. But, but I just remember the many times that you were so helpful there. So thank you.
If you ever want to come back, Daniel will hire you.
She's like out the doors.
Yeah.
This started when she was 10.
She wasn't even wondering if she was going to come this afternoon.
Oh, really?
No. You better come.
You have to come. All right. Next item on our agenda is F3, which is a presentation and possible discussion by staff and council members relating to our 2023 Annual League of Cities and Towns Conference and items presented at the conference. So this is a kind of an open opportunity for us to talk about the conference without getting in trouble and having Brett tell us to stop. So in lieu of putting this in your reports, this is an opportunity to talk a little about it. So Anthony, I don't know if you want to start and we'll kind of run around the dais here.
At first, I went in and not knowing what to expect, being this is my first, first year going to the League of Cities and Towns, and so didn't know what to expect. But after being there, learnt a lot, and just so fortunate was able to hear some great speakers. And another thing I want to say while I was there, I heard a lot about Casa Grande, where other people from other cities talking about what great a job we're doing here. And so I'm so thankful to be a part of City Council here at Casa Grande and just hear our name being spoken very highly of instead of in a negative light. And it was all in a positive light, and I'm so thankful and I'm just so happy to be a part of that. And so I was able to pull a lot, lot from the meetings that I went to. They had meetings going on everywhere and at all times. And so it was a great time. Food was great as well and some wonderful speakers. Oh, Steve. Yeah, food was great.
You must have been at a different dinner than I was at. Did your salmon never show up?
He's not as picky as you.
No, not as picky. But had a great time, really enjoyed the whole meeting.
Great. Thank you, Anthony. Donna?
Well, there was 1,400 people there from all over, I think, what, 91?
91.
91 cities and towns. And this is, I've been several times, and so I was interested to find out what you thought about it, and we did have some excellent speakers. I focused on, we, we had so many workshops, and I focused on a few more about cultural economy, about education, women in leadership, and then also the water update for Central Arizona Project. I will say that it was a little sad during the, the opening flag ceremony because as long as I've been on council, Mr. Powell has always had that flag, and he wasn't there, but Matt stepped in and did an awesome job.
Did not trip.
With our youth commission, and I will say that.
Didn't fall over.
It's always a proud, proud moment when we see our youth commission there because they are just so outgoing and energetic, and they represent us so well. And then we also do a showcase that we got to visit with, I think there was 55 booths that were there from other towns, and of course, we had the Lucid car that was a big hit, and we had free-to-lay snacks, and so we had cars and snacks. That was a good combination. So it was really a good conference, and I, I think it was well done. You know, we were down in Tucson, so it was, it was beneficial. It's probably one of the, the best conferences where I feel that I learn a lot from other communities, and the networking is really important. So that's my two cents.
All right, Matt?
Thank you. Yeah, again, won't rehash everything, but I took kind of a business track with this, and we had a great opening speaker, a guy named Kevin Brown, who was very, very touching and gets you going. But the neat thing is, is networking with all the other cities. And again, like Anthony said, they all know who we are, everybody throughout the state because of what's going on here. So I took that, that thing, and interesting thing is we've been approached by some producers to start up a film, film office because there's state money for that state tax breaks. And so getting that launched is important, and we submit through the ACA, and they help us. And I did learn a lot about that because we're very early on, and, and what I did learn is they're very, they're going to be very helpful to us. Anytime we have any questions, they're excited, and just how much money it brings into a community. And I remember when they filmed Three Kings here when I was much younger, how much money that brought into town, and they just give examples, and even small movies can bring hundreds of thousands of dollars and jobs and room nights and, and meals and scouting locations and even for just like three-day shoots for commercials. So it's kind of exciting and something neat that will help showcase our community and build it up. Along with that, I went with the cultural economy, building up that with some other people in here, and that was pretty neat to see how the arts and culture can help build, build your tourism, again, kind of going along with that. And then as Brett would be proud, I went to incentivizing development while protecting municipalities, and we do a pretty good job of that, and a lot of people seem to think we can just give all this stuff away, but it's very, very specific what we can do to help these companies come to town, and it's a partnership. And then one very neat thing I learned is that a few of these that haven't gone the right way in other cities, even though the, the development agreement didn't go, the asset was still built there. So they said you have to remember that, that no matter what, if that's built and then it gets unwound years later, you still have the asset. So that was an interesting take on it. And then, and then building a stronger link between business and government, which is a hobby of mine, I'll say, doing this and then being president of the chamber. So we've been working on that a lot, and just how important it is for us to work together. And, and I've always said this, and we were sharing ideas about it at the seminar of the businesses that have been here for a long time, you know, we get a lot of fanfare for Lucid and Kohler, and they're very important. They bring a lot of investment, a lot of jobs, but there's a lot of people here who've been sponsoring, you know, Little League teams and soccer teams and giving to the schools and donating meals, and those are the people that have been here for, you know, 15, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, these businesses in town, which is the backbone. So how we take care of those as well through the chamber, through the city, just to make sure that they know that they're a valued part of our community. So that was a very neat thing. And then I had to go represent the city. We were all the way in Tucson. I had to go to Tempe to represent the city at the President Crow's tailgate for ASU. We were all invited, but I had to go and represent. I didn't tell them everything I was thinking about sports and all, but anyway, it was a nice event, and they talked about how building education through communities. So it was a good event to go, but I represented our city, just so you guys know. It was a good time. Then the dust storm came and all that.
Take them for the team.
Yeah.
Nice sacrifice.
I missed the showcase to represent the city there. But I also want to thank Gloria and her staff especially because they put all of this stuff together for us and make all the arrangements and set up the booths, and the staff sets up the booth, and they do a lot of work behind the scenes to help us. So Gloria, thank you to you and your staff, and we appreciate it. I'm done with that.
Lisa?
Well, you know, it's always, I've been going to these conferences for several years also, and Anthony, you're going to see that every year it, you, you learn something new every year. And the way I look at this, we have a business that's a law firm, and our attorneys have to go through CLE trainings every year, you know, for education, and I feel that's what this is for us. You know, we go and we learn about the trends, your best practices, and how we can improve our city. So I, you know, try to, when I go to these conferences, I really look at what is going, what we're dealing with here, which in this, we're really dealing with everything, but the things that really are, are key issues here. So, you know, just to kind of give you an idea, I know, I have a lot of notes. Look at this, Larry. Highlights even. I won't go through all that now, but I want to get with you because again, we, we learn new things, even though, you're right, we hear a lot about Casa Grande, and there's some great things that we're doing, but we always, there's always really good things that we can, you know, improve on. So, so some of the things that I focused on were obviously education. You know, we several years ago decided to put education in our strategic plan, and Mayor, aren't you glad we did that? Because now it's the trend, and it was, when, back when we put it in our strategic plan, you know, and people weren't, you know, cities weren't doing that. And so the mayor obviously is, is, you know, you know, carrying the torch on this for us, and it's really important to have those collaborations and, and dealings. And I think the, the key point that I learned on that is, you know, obviously the collaboration, but the best tool for cities and for our mayors is convening and making sure that, because we can convene, we can bring people together, and so all the partnerships. So I think that was kind of one of the, the key points, and obviously there's some great things going on in other cities. The cultural economy, I went through a couple of my counterparts were in there, you know, the arts, you know, we're, again, we're doing some great things with our underpass, with our utility box artwork, but you know, it's, you know, it's just, you know, it, it brings that community pride and, and culture to the city. So, so I think, you know, again, we're, we're doing some great things, but you know, there's definitely public art tells a story, and they were even talking about temporary art, you know, and spreading the, the story of healthcare and some of the things that are going on with health issues and, and putting temporary art to promote some of the, the community health. So building, you know, healthy housing, obviously housing is a big issue. I went to a couple of sessions on housing when it came to density, you know, the different types of housing, where we are, you know, with housing, of course, you know, we're hoping to get our report here soon with our housing numbers and where we are and, and different types of housing products. And so, you know, you know, again, we're a lot going on. Multifamily housing is, is popular everywhere. There's a need everywhere, so we're doing great there. They talked a lot about, you know, townhomes, condos and that type of thing, also very important. The digital divide on internet, obvious, you know, they, one key point there was the internet is not everything, the answer to everything. There's a lot that comes with it, security, making sure that everyone has equal access. We have a lot of our population that doesn't have access to the internet. So how we can work with our libraries and educate our employees to help people that, that need that service in our community center, a lot of great things there, data density and distribution that was on, you know, housing and strategic planning on economic development, strategic planning, and the legislature session, I don't know if any of you guys went, but that one was just a headache. I think the key issue there is that we're deeply partisan universe is that, that came out of that. But of course, it was great to hear, you know, our legislatures and what's going on and, and updates there. And then it ended with a really good comedian, huh, you guys? I mean, I think we all have to remember what we do, and it's all about laughter and, you know, kind of making fun of yourself a little bit and, you know, what we do, but it was a really good, wasn't he? I mean, he was really good. Like, we were like in tears, you know, laughing. So, so great session, and thank you to Gloria, and Scott was there and all of our staff for the, the great booth with Lucid, the car. It was definitely, people thought we were giving away a car, which was crazy, but, but it was, it was so nice to showcase our city, and you guys did a, a great job there. So thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Lisa. Bob?
Mayor, thanks to Governor Hobbs for showing up and giving a, a talk. It was a pleasure to see her and hear her speak. My focus on the breakout sections was, was water and also housing under the water umbrella was kind of a message that we're, we're in pretty good shape right now today. In Arizona, our local in-state reservoirs are in good shape, and we got a little bit of a reprieve on the Colorado River, but the, the overall message though was now is not the time to relax and enjoy it. We gotta, we gotta stay, stay alert and stay on top of water and do things to make that water go just as far as it can. Under housing, heard everything from policy on dealing with homeless to tax breaks to developers who will offer income ratios for the, for lower rent, for, for low-income folks. And it was very reassuring to go down these paths and, and to points, understand that our challenges are not unique, that they're, they're statewide, probably national, but wide, but at least statewide. And also the city of Casa Grande is very well positioned on all of these things. Like Anthony, I only heard good things about Casa Grande, and it, it's enjoyable to hear and to realize that we are a very well-managed community, and it, it does afford you a little bit of pride in, in being part of that.
Definitely.
Can I say one more thing before you?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that the, I forgot I had it on my computer, but the league, the youth commission had six delegates there that went, and they went to the youth commission breakout sessions, and I, I got to join them for lunch, and our youth commission from Casa Grande is forming a League of Arizona Youth Commissions so they can have their own, their own type league. So, so they can network together, which they've kind of laid the groundwork for.
You mean Anthony?
Anthony, yeah. But, you know, with the help of the others. So he actually was the speaker at lunchtime. Yeah. And he had another guy from, from the Gilbert Youth Commission with him, so they're trying to get that going. So they, they've been laying the groundwork through their, their leadership network. Network. So anyway, just wanted to say that.
No, that's cool. That's cool. Yeah, good, good point. And they usually, so to kind of lay the frameworks, we, we kind of assume you all know what the Arizona League of Cities is. So the Arizona League of Cities and Towns is an organization that is made up of 91 cities and towns. All the cities and towns in Arizona are members, and they pay dues, and that sets up the, basically a director and a staff that works down at the Capitol. The offices are right next to the Capitol. They really are our lobbying office. I mean, they're our lobbying network. They keep an eye on the legislature for cities and towns, and they look after our interests. So it's there, and as a member of the executive board, I'm on the executive board and representing the city of Casa Grande, and it's, it's not every mayor is on the board. It is, it is a select few that get asked to be on the board. So we have an opportunity with that organization to really have influence on state policy. And at the, at our meeting, we actually have what's called a resolution committee, and the resolution committee actually entertains policy questions from its members, cities and towns, and then it goes to the various committees, which everyone up here is, is on one of those committees. And so I, in fact, I chair the transportation committee, and I know these guys are on, on the other committees. And so we have input as to what resolutions then get put forward to the, to the business side of the cities and towns. And that those, the, the biggest thing that was going on this year was on, on rental, rental properties. So for example, the city of Sedona has about 35% of every home is a rental, is a VRBO. 35% of every home is a VRBO, which means there's no how, it's driven the pricing of all the housing through the roof because people come in from California and they pay cash, and then they rent these houses out. So all the, I mean, Sedona is a tourism town, so I'm not sure why they didn't see it coming, but it, it really had created a problem because nobody could live in, in town. So all your workers that live in Cottonwood, and they commute. So it'd be like having Casa Grande and everybody living in Coolidge and then commuting into town, or actually further, you're like living in, you have to live in Florence and commute into Casa Grande. So it's become a huge problem in Arizona. We, we have a little bit of it here. It's not, not a huge problem yet, but we probably have probably 150 VRBO homes that you probably don't even know are there. And so, you know, the, some of the resolutions we passed this last week will help cities and towns if we get legislation through the, through our state legislature to help us manage that situation. So anyway, I wanted to kind of at least give you a lay, a lay of the land in terms of, of what the organization is about and how it's laid out. I was, I ran or was part of a panel for the Arizona Mayor's Education Roundtable, so I was actually one of the many events that, that we had, and as the chairman...
The offices are right next to the Capitol. They really are our lobbying office. I mean, they're our lobbying network. They keep an eye on the legislature for cities and towns, and they look after our interests. So it's, they're, and as a member of the executive board, I'm on the executive board and representing the city of Casa Grande, and it's, it's not every mayor is on the board. It is, it is a select few that get asked to be on the board. So we have an opportunity with that organization to really have influence on state policy. And at the, at our meeting, we actually have what's called a resolution committee, and the resolution committee actually entertains policy questions from its members, cities and towns, and then it goes to the various committees, which everyone up here is, is on one of those committees. And so I, in fact, I chair the transportation committee, and I know these guys are on, on the other committees. And so we have input as to what resolutions then get put forward to the, to the business side of the cities and towns. And that, those, the biggest thing that was going on this year was on, on rental, rental properties. So, for example, the city of Sedona has about 35% of every home is a rental, is a VRBO. 35% of every home is a VRBO, which means there's no how, it's driven the pricing of all the housing through the roof, because people come in from California and they pay cash, and then they rent these houses out. So all the, I mean, Sedona is a tourism town, so I'm not sure why they didn't see it coming, but it really had created a problem, because nobody could live in town. So all your workers, they live in Cottonwood, and they commute. So it'd be like having Casa Grande and everybody living in Coolidge and then commuting into town. Or actually, further, you're like living in, you have to live in Florence and commute into Casa Grande. So it's become a huge problem in Arizona. We have a little bit of it here. It's not, not a huge problem yet, but we probably have, probably 150 VRBO homes that you probably don't even know are there. And so, you know, the, some of the resolutions we passed this last week will help cities and towns if we get legislation through the, through our state legislature to help us manage that situation. So, anyway, I wanted to kind of at least give you a lay of the land in terms of what the organization is about and how it's laid out. I was, I ran or was part of a panel for the Arizona Mayors Education Roundtable, so I was actually one of the many events that, that we had. And as the chairman of the, of the roundtable, they asked me to be part of that panel. So it was interesting. We had the Board of Regents there, which was fascinating to hear their take on education and, and where our universities and our, our community colleges are going. And so it was, it was, it was a good program, a good, good opportunity, I think, to spread the word in terms of, of this roundtable that we have. I'm trying to get more school board members on the roundtable, because that's the piece that we're missing. We don't have any school board members on. We have mayors, and we have superintendents, and we have some teachers, but we don't have any board members from the school boards. So we're going to try and make it more, more collaborative and bring more people in and have this collaborative conversation about education, about municipalities, about state government, and how we can work together to make our education system better. So just one little project I'm working on, along with a bunch of others, but it's, it was, it's always a good event, and it's always a good opportunity for us to get together also away from, from the city. Typically, it goes to Tucson one year and then up to Phoenix the next year, and it's because Tucson and Phoenix have the bigger hotels and they can handle the size of the group. It's gotten very large in the last couple of years, so I think, I think actually it was more than 1,400. It was close to 2,000 this year. So in terms, if you count all the vendors and everybody who was there, it was, it was, it was massive. So it's one of the biggest conferences in the state. So, anyway, any other comments? Anybody else has? I mean, we could talk forever on all this, but, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for, for your contribution on it. And thank you for being there, too. Next item is our G item, which is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anybody who has anything you want to pull from the consent agenda? Anybody from the audience? From the public? Okay, seeing none, then I will call for a rule. Well, I need a motion first.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is item H. This is our public comments portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity where I'm going to open the floor, and if you would like to address the council on any subject, this is your opportunity. Please step forward and state your name. We'll give you three minutes to comment. If you just understand that it's not an agendized item, so we can't comment on it, but you can say whatever you'd like. Okay. Did I open the floor? I did open the floor. All right. All right, seeing no comments, then I'm going to go close the floor, and we'll move to item I-1, award of contracts. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the Southside, excuse me, Southside Pavement Preservation Reconstruction Project for an amount not to exceed $3,240,336. This amount does include a contingency of $294,576. And this is to allow us opportunities that when we do find ourselves looking at issues we weren't able to uncover prior to the start of construction, we can deal with addressing those issues within the approved contract. Staff is also requesting to utilize the City of Buckeye Job Order Contract Number 2019005-04. The project will include all the residential streets south of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks, as well as Lawrence Street west of Thornton, Ash Avenue between Thornton and Florence Street, North Schultz Street north of Ash Avenue, and Selma Highway between Thornton Road and Chuchu Road. This is a very complex project, where we're going to be utilizing a very, a variety of different treatment options, where it's going to include edge milling of, from one inch to zero depth, full width milling to one inch, applications of high-volume precoated chip seal, followed by application of micro, type-two microseal, asphalt patching, asphalt overlay, state, I can't talk tonight, I apologize, cement-based stabilization, hot-mix pavement, and then pavement striping and crack sealing. This contract does give us a variety to really look at a lot of different opportunities with these streets. A lot of them are some of our oldest streets in town, but they've got great bones. Those are the ones that we're going to be doing more of a surface treatment on, whereas the ones that have deteriorated a little too far, that's where you're getting into the one-inch mill and overlay. So those are the projects, and we do have available budget of $5 million-plus dollars in the budget remaining. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll just say, a lot of those roads need that. It's time.
When would that be started?
Typically, if we get this approved, they will start doing some of the work in the late part of this year, but typically, those projects are going to start in the spring of the year.
Okay.
Kevin, are the dollars that we're using for this, any of them county dollars that we get from the, the half-cent sales tax?
Yes, some of this money is from half-cent sales tax, some of it, construction sales tax. This one might be 100% half-cent sales tax, and I believe it is.
Okay. Now, I mean, so, right now, the county, can I elaborate on that?
I have no idea what you're saying.
Well, the half-cent sales tax that's being used to pay for these roads are, are sales tax that has been in place for 40 years. And it will be coming up again for renewal to the citizens in 2024. And so you're going to hear more about it. It's important, though, that you understand that these sales tax dollars are used and used on your roads. So it helps in terms of, you know, the city's budget, right? Because, because these are dollars that we get from a county, the county that collects the sales tax. And it, again, it's been, this will be the third renewal for it. We had 20 years and then another 20 years, and this will be a renewal opportunity in 2024. So we'll be talking more about it, but I think it's important that our citizens realize where the money is coming from and how important those dollars are. Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions or comments? Was I okay?
I'm good.
All right. So seeing no other comments, then I'll entertain a resolution, please.
Resolution, excuse me, resolution number 5566. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Sunland Asphalt and Construction for the Southside Pavement Reconstruction Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5566 as presented.
Second. Right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item I-2. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the Peters Road pavement reconstruction for an amount not to exceed $976,7871. This does include a $127,418 contingency to allow staff to work with the contractor if we uncover anything that we aren't able to see at this time with that pavement. Again, we're utilizing the same Buckeye Job Order Contract. We found that this contract really does us allow, allow us to have the flexibility to look at a pavement section and really look at what it really needs to bring it back up to a service life that we can maintain. And I should have noted in the last request, Selma Highway was included in the detour during the Thornton Road project. Peters was the other road that was impacted by that detour. Neither of those roads were ever constructed to a, a pavement section that was intended to have that much truck traffic on it. They were already old roads. Selma Highway, we had actually done a chip seal out there to see if that would work, but it failed. So both of those roads need rebuilding. This one was in the budget for maintenance in last year's budget, but we didn't have enough money to cover the cost of what we truly needed to do to bring that pavement back. So this project will bring that pavement back to a condition that we can then maintain. And it will be a full asphalt removal, stabilization of the base course, and then five inches of new asphalt. Very similar to the project that the county did in their sections of Peters Road and Thornton Road down to I-8 last year, when they finished that project. This will be the same treatment that those two roads received. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? All right. Seeing none, then I'll entertain a resolution, number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5567. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the Peters Road Pavement Reconstruction Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5567 as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item I-3. This is considering approval of ordinance number 3388. Mr. Rains, or Stephen?
Mayor and council. Mayor and council, Deb Brunner, our transit manager, will be given a separate presentation.
All right, Deb.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. And staff, we are recommending that the mayor and city council approve the selection of RTW Management as the contractor for the Casa Grande Link Public Transit Service and enter an agreement with RTW Management for the operation and vehicle maintenance of the Casa Grande Link service. What I'd like to do is share, which one? I don't know where I'm aiming.
Just hit the one with the button.
Okay, Stephen? All right, thank you. Today, as I mentioned, we are going to, we are seeking your approval to award this transit service agreement with RTW. And this is an exciting moment for the city, because it's the very first time that we will be operating public transit, to my knowledge, any research I've been able to discover in the city, and it is of a demand-response nature. There's been a lot that's led up to this, and we've covered that at other times, and this slide does mention that. I will indicate that with approval today, service will begin on October 23rd, Monday, October 23rd, so that's virtually around the corner. Next slide, please.
And just for the public's information, I think that's $2.5 million, right?
In cares.
Not $2.50.
Correct. It's an M, an M.
All right, just calling you out, Deb.
Oh, did I say the wrong thing? My apologies. Next, next page. So one of the things I wanted to mention is that this is a very robust service. It'll operate Monday to Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That's 12 hours a day. Those are very core hours. Those are peak periods for travel to work and school, in addition to off-peak hours for other activities that may happen. So just want to let you know that sometimes you might see a bus that looks empty, and other times you might see a bus that looks full, and that is because of peak and off-peak periods. And another important factor is the fact that we will link with the CART Regional Service. There's four bus stops that they have. It's within our service area. One is downtown at the main library, one's at the county complex on Cottonwood, at the Fry's, there's a stop right in front of the Casa Grande, the Grande Shops, and at Banner Hospital. Next slide. So as the mayor indicated, this is a $2.5 million grant that we receive from the federal government. This is for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. It will carry us, we estimate, two and a half, possibly to three years. This is totally on the federal dime and not using any money from the city. At this time, as I mentioned, there's no local match required. After that period of time, then we will use the Section 5307 formula funds that we receive at the ratio that's shared on this page. Next page. Part of the process in preparing for new services, we went out to bid, and I just wanted to show you all the steps and the involvement and the timeframe that was involved. Next page. The evaluating committee consisted of three transit managers, myself, Eric in Coolidge, Pedro from Prescott Valley. They are also our partner, 5307 Community. They, they started, and they've gone through the process with, with us. And then we had three other individuals as stakeholders. There was two, two phases to the scoring, the proposal, and then the interview where we looked at technology in a demonstration. Next page, please. I wanted to talk about RTW very quickly. They're based in, because they're going to come up and address you in a moment. RTW is based in Salt Lake City, and they actually started in 1999 by providing shuttle service for the Olympics in Park City. So that was one way of getting into the transit business, but at this point in their, in their development and their history, they operate fixed route service, deviated fixed route service, on-demand microtransit, VA transportation, and then other shuttle services. They've provided emergency assistance to FEMA during the Katrina incident in Louisiana, and then in the state of Utah for a variety of different events. With us this evening, we have a couple of individuals. One is, I want to call out Mary Lee Uitt. She is our project manager, and she'll come up and say hi in a minute. She's a 20-plus-year, experienced transit manager. She started, she's been on the public and the private side. She's a certified trainer for drivers through ADOT. She has, she's a drug and alcohol program administrator. She has oodles of certificates, and that's just going to guarantee that, well, it's going to guarantee us as the city, you know, providing the services, she, they know what they're doing, and she's got the experience to boot it. And then they have an extensive corporate team that's going to assist during the startup in all phases, you know, HR and planning and safety, but also beyond. And that's one of the areas where they did impress us. Now, there were, we received four proposals, two were non-responsive, and so RTW competed with the other firm. And why we felt that RTW was the right choice and with the other firm. And why we felt that RTW was the right choice, and these are some of the reasons. Again, we've got the experienced project manager and that deep team on the corporate level. They will hire the drivers. They are direct employees. They're not contracted. Again, they have extensive training. The dispatch office is here in Casa Grande. It's not a remote location. And you will have a live person for folks who want to call in and ask questions or book a trip. You're going to get a live person. They have a technology that George and Mary Lee are going to speak to in a moment, this RideCo. It's a leading scheduling solution software program. And it works in the office where, if you were to call in, they'll book the trip right there into this program. But we also have a rider app for those of us that choose to use a smart device or our computer. And that's just going to open up even more opportunities. It does a whole lot of neat things, like pushing notifications, and they're going to get into some of the details of that. So you'll be excited to hear that. They do an extensive training with each and every driver that comes on board, 40-plus hours. That's about 20 hours in the classroom and then another 20 behind the wheel, BTW. And on top of that, they use a program that I'm familiar with, that I think it's ACIS. I think it's probably the best in the country, and it's also used in the trucking industry, and it's the Smith System Defensive Driving. They will...do you ever watch, you know, these long-haul truckers? Typically, they're very safe and cautious, and they see things that are about to happen before it happens. That's the type of training our drivers will receive as well. All of our vehicles will be accessible. So if we have somebody who uses a wheelchair or a mobility device, we do have a place in each of the vehicles to secure that device. So at this point, I'd like to introduce and bring up George Goats. He's the president of RTW. And Mary Lee Uitt, she is our proposed project manager. And just let them speak to you for a few minutes.
Great, thanks, Deb.
Thanks.
So I've got the next slide. Deb asked us to talk about our technology, but I'm glad to answer any questions. And Mary Lee's here as well to answer any questions you might have. So obviously, safety is a transportation agency. It's our number-one priority. We have a robust process. You know, it's in our best interest to spend 40 hours training these drivers. We want to be invested in them. We want them to be invested in us. And we...you know, the safe outcomes are, you know, well worth that investment. In our industry, we have what's called an e-mod. So it's kind of like a rating of safety that insurance companies give you. Ours is point seven, which is what we think is the best in the industry, the best that we've heard of. That means we pay 70% of the premiums that our peers pay. So one is the market average. So the efforts we spend in investing our drivers' training, you know, pays off financially as well as just being the right thing to do. You have the next page. So we use a variety of technologies, and I think that's probably one of our competitive advantages. ADP is something you've probably all heard of. There are advanced integrations that we use to make sure we're 100% compliant with drug testing, driver certificates, you know, anything that is employee-related. So when we hire new employees, everything's done online. So they submit pictures of their driver's license. All this stuff is uploaded, verified, and in the system. So if we have a DOT audit in the future, or the FTA audits our operation, we can ensure that we're 100% compliant, and we can do that remotely. So we can give them a login. They look at our records, and we're done. So that's been an innovation that's happened in the last couple of years that freed up a lot of man-hours and just made it easy for our customers, our municipal customers, to get through these audits and the compliance stuff quickly. Fleetio is just a fleet maintenance software, so we know when everything's done. You know, the city can also have access to that real-time if you want to see, you know, when we're doing oil changes, things like that. It's all in there, and we can kind of track, you know, how well the vehicle's doing, any trends, you know, predict breakdowns, things like that. Nato is a camera system that actually allows...it looks at the driver. So if a driver's looking down, they drop something, heaven forbid they're on their phone, we get a video clip. So it's about five seconds before and five seconds after, and we can, you know, we can see those trends. If we see a driver that's having problems, we can pick that up quickly and, you know, retrain. Or if they're just not getting it, then, you know, we let them go and are able to maintain a higher-than-industry standard safety record through these Nato cameras. They also have a forward and rear-facing, you know, for any kind of incident. RideCo is the last one. We'll go to the next slide and talk a little more about that. So RideCo is...they like to call themselves our technology partner. They charge us like a partner rather than just a vendor, but they really do provide the best service. We've looked at probably every technology partner there is. RideCo's the best by far. I think their qualities are...the qualities that we like that are better than their peers are really the robustness of the service. So it's been around the longest. It doesn't go down, right? It doesn't have glitches like some of the other ones. It's completely multimodal, which means it can tie into a transit system. So if someone wants to take CART out to the school, they can do that. And ours in RideCo is the only system that can say, okay, what time does the ride have to get to the bus stop in order to get them to their destination on time? So they know when they have to get to class. RideCo can tell them when they need to be picked up. So we like that it's robust. It's reliable, and that it's multimodal, and it's the easiest to use. So the internal app or the external app that you'll see when you download, you know, you put in your information. It's the simplest, you know, big fields. You know, it's really made for elderly folks. It's intuitive. That's the same app that our dispatchers see. So if someone calls and has a question, they can walk them through the app. It really is the simplest, the most...kind of the sleekest solution that we've found on both ends. And so it's...our dispatchers can walk those people through, you know, making changes on an app, and they can have all their information there. So if someone wants to...if someone has a ride that they need on a weekly basis, that information's stored. And so they say, okay, I've got dialysis every Wednesday at 3:00. They just click dialysis Wednesday at 3:00, and they're scheduled. We know what kind of vehicle they need. If they're in a wheelchair, we know they need a wheelchair vehicle. That's all built into the system. Every vehicle has its categories. The vehicle knows how many people it holds. It knows, you know, if it has a wheelchair, if it's wheelchair-accessible, all those things. And then it dispatches the appropriate vehicle to the person. So we love the software. It's been...it's definitely the best in the industry. That's all of the set presentation, but if you have any questions, we're glad to answer those as well.
I did have one question. So the maintenance and the dispatch center, are they located remotely? Where are they going to be located?
That's a good question. So the dispatch center will be in our office. So we'll have a dispatcher who will take calls, who will book trips. You know, it's easier in the long run for the patron to book the trips themselves, but initially, we will always have someone to answer the phone. If, for whatever reason, we get overflow calls, those will go to Salt Lake. But the first calls come into...will come into the office here.
And dispatch centers in Utah?
The...I would say the overflow. What's that?
The main dispatch center is located here at Public Forest.
Okay.
So if it overflows, it'll go to Salt Lake.
Okay, okay. And then your service?
For now, we'll outsource maintenance, just because it's only three vehicles. As we grow, we'll look at doing that ourselves. But there's this kind of a threshold where it merits our own mechanic.
Okay.
So we hope to hit that, but...
And the vehicles will be new, used?
Combination of both. So we have some of these vehicles in our fleet right now. We'll bring in a minivan. So we've split it up to where we'll have a 14-passenger...
You're going to give us the best ones you have?
We will. We've got...yeah, well, so we'll mix it up. We've got a minivan, a 14-passenger van, and then two kind of nine-passenger vans. And I think as things grow, we'll kind of see what demand there is for new vehicles and which vehicles.
And the green shack car.
Green shack.
Okay.
Oh, here's a picture of them.
Donna, go ahead.
Just a couple things. I appreciate...I was reading through the material. I'm glad Deb said she limited it to 50 pages for us. And I highlighted the customer service training because I think that was something that we talked about early on. So I was happy to see that. I just have a follow-up question on the drug and alcohol testing. Is that done at the hiring process only, or is it done random drug testing throughout employment?
I'll take that one.
We'll do perform drug testing during the hiring process and then random as well. This instance, we may have to discuss that one because these drivers aren't required to have CDLs at this point in time. So it wouldn't be a federal type of random drug testing, but we can certainly perform forensic or non-DOT drug testing on a random basis. And then we do post-accident drug testing as well. So, yeah, we can mimic all of the DOT drug testing only on a non-DOT basis.
Okay, thank you.
Matt?
Yeah. I was glad to see the different types of vehicles because at first I thought it was just 12-passenger vans, but you've got a lot of different stuff in the bigger. I noticed that they're all outfitted for wheelchair lifts and everything. Are they reconfigurable, too? If we have more people riding, we can put more seats in, or you guys...I'm sure you guys deal with that all the time, so...
Sure. There are a couple of things we can do. So the 14-passenger van has two flip-up seats. So if there's a wheelchair in, you flip them up. If there's not, you flip them down. So it's 12 passengers unless you have a wheelchair. Or if you have a wheelchair, it's 12. It's 14 if you don't. The transit van, same thing. We'll have a wheelchair position. You can pull the wheelchair position out. They're bolts set, so you can put in seats.
Okay. And then I did also like...it sounds like you guys back up your drivers very well and employees. If there's a problem on one of the vehicles, it goes straight to the...you know, we have a dedicated manager, like you said, here in the area. So...and they really back up their drivers and take care of those issues and don't leave it just up to the drivers to solve. Is that...
You're talking about mechanical issues?
What's that?
You're talking about mechanical issues?
Yeah. No, I'm talking about people issues as well.
Yeah.
Passengers.
That's a great question. So Mary Lee was our project manager in Park City, Utah. So she operated...and probably backed up our drivers as well as any general manager or project manager we've ever had. So glad to let you talk to that. But yeah, if there's any disturbances, I mean, things in the road, you know, unsafe environments, whatever, she's on it.
Yeah, as I was reading through the presentation, I saw that you guys really...you know, I would expect...people think it's just left up to the driver, but it seems like you guys have a really good system to help back them up and make sure that things are taken care of so it doesn't affect the other passengers as well, so...
Thanks, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand the system first, you know, before you can manage it. You have to know what you're looking at, right? And I think that makes the best type of management. So that was one thing that I would do, or is one thing that I would do, is make sure I learn the system, learn the area, kind of how you can reroute or something so that we can help the drivers and things like that.
Real quick.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a mention. So I think Mayor Uitt was alluding to this a little bit, and you mentioned a little bit about the maintenance. So if one of your vehicles break down, are we able to get another vehicle in place?
Correct. So we have four vehicles. Three will operate. One will serve as a backup. And so if, you know, if they need maintenance, we'll just rotate them in through routine maintenance. Or, you know, if there's a flat tire, you know, heaven forbid there's a breakdown or something like that.
And time is of the essence with transit, and so that's something that we would do on the fly, get that out there quickly. If I'm the person driving it out there to exchange, then that's how it is.
Bob, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Come in.
So, you know, this is brand-new to us. We are very anxious to get it up and running. And to some extent, it's an experiment. You know, we don't know what the demand is going to be and where that demand will be. Do you have a track record of being able to work with the municipality to...I don't know if we want to say alter, but tweak and adjust the scheduling and the routes and all of that?
Sure, absolutely. We will provide data reports and make recommendations based on what we see. So, you know, we'll track if someone makes a request outside of the zone. We'll track that, and we'll send all that to the, you know, to the council as often as you guys want every month. And we'll say, you know, if you do...you know, we've got the demand for an extra vehicle. This is a vehicle we recommend. All those things are kind of the routine part of what we do.
May I add to this?
Yeah.
So demand response has been around for a few years, but it's really kind of evolved in the last, you know, in the more recent years to something where it covers a broader area, and it's not...it's not reduced to just a certain number of stops in certain locations. Now, it's kind of spans across a geography, right? So my experience with it, up in Park City, we started a demand response a couple of years ago up there, and it had instant success. So I foresee this as being very popular right away.
Great.
I think we do.
Thank you.
Great.
RideCo again is the scheduling software, and I wanted to let you know that the cities of Avondale, Goodyear, and Surprise are using the RideCo product. They have a very efficient system. They are meeting all of their KPIs, their targets, their goals, and exceeding them. And I think that that partnership with their transit experience is just going to help us grow the business. But the other thing that they have onboard is a full-time...well, not a full-time, but we have a company, Lost Our Communications, which is public relations, and they will work with us as a team to grow our business over years. So we're going to look at the service area. We're going to track the patterns and the times of days and, you know, all of that, and then determine what we can do to improve things. Like, we might have virtual bus stops at the Promenade Mall instead of just going here, there, or everywhere. So we're going to be looking at ways to improve the service, kind of copying a little bit from microtransit, but we feel that this will make the service even more efficient. And one thing I failed to mention is this is a curb-to-curb service. So you don't have to walk out to the bus stop. You can wait at your home. You can wait at the business in a sheltered location, not out in the heat of the sun or a downpour. So you're going to get a notification from the software. Your bus will be there in five minutes. Then you get a notification, the bus has arrived or the vehicle has arrived. So I think that's going to go a long way on making this so convenient and desirable. And I'm kind of thinking of our elderly citizens who...it's an effort just to, you know, get out and do certain things. So if this helps them increase their independence and mobility, you know, that's a win for all of us.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Lisa.
And I've said this before, of course, I get so excited. I know Deb, she hears it all the time, but it's so exciting for us to be at this point and for, you know, for you all that are going to be the RTW. Like Councilmember Huddleston said, you know, this is new for us, and this is something that we have been working towards for many years. So it started...I was talking to Mike Henderson. And Deb, when I'm done, if you can introduce, because I know you have several of your committee members here, and I'm so grateful for all of them and them spending this time, especially Mike, because Mike Henderson was on the original committee. We were talking early about seven years ago. So, you know, so many of these projects take time, you know, to get to this point. So there were so many stakeholders that were involved in the meetings. We did, you know, focus groups. We did surveys with the community. That's how we came up with this, you know, the service area and the types of vehicles and, you know, all that stuff. So it's so nice to see, as I look through the scope of work, to see that all the things that seven, eight years ago that were discussed with all these stakeholders, you guys are looking at. And it's something that we're, you know, we're following through with. But data is going to be important. You know, we know that this is, you know, three years. You know, we're going to have funding for the three years. And of course, the data is going to be important on how we move forward and to share with the community if it's successful. So again, I'm just, you know, glad we're at this point. I really hope the community uses it. I hope with your expertise, we promote it to all of our population. You know, I hope there's, you know, Spanish-speaking. You know, on the app, there's Spanish language. You know, someone, if they call and speak, you know, I mean, I want to make sure because the area that we're servicing, you know, has, you know, high Hispanic population that might need the Spanish language. So I hope we look at that, too, and collect that data. But Deb, if you could introduce your members here, so everyone knows.
I would be happy to. So with us today, we have Mr. Henderson and Nick Mettle. I saw him...there he is. Yeah, we have two members. We had a couple of other members that were going to try to be here.
You got another one.
Oh, Victor. I'm sorry.
Victor's here.
I didn't...my apologies, gentlemen. I didn't see you folks over here. So, yes, and we did...in fact, Mr. Gomez was on our evaluating committee. So a member of the TAC went through the process, and so there was, you know, that involvement. And I might mention, you may have read it in your report, that the TAC did unanimously recommend this, what we're asking for today. So, yeah, no, the formation of the TAC has been a huge bonus for the community because I'm working with them. We're looking at policies and bus rules and fare structures, and it's very important to have this committee behind me and have them... behind me and, and have them shape and provide their input. Yes.
And Deb, when we launch, when we launch this, we're talking here this fall, so.
Next month.
Is it next fall? No?
October.
Next month.
Yeah, next month.
Next month.
This fall? Isn't that this fall?
This fall.
I was like, next month.
It's next month, man.
Well, it's this fall.
It's this.
It's not fall yet. It's hot. It's still hot. It's not fall yet.
Not here.
I just want to, I want to make sure that we get some, some stuff, right? Some one-pagers that we can stick everywhere and/or electronically send out to everyone.
These are already in the process of being distributed. It's going into publications. We're having a kickoff event that we'll share more of.
Okay. Yeah, work with, obviously, PIO. Of course, you work right up there with Heather and her team. So I want to make sure that, you know, we, you work with the newspaper, get Jody to write six or seven articles, you know.
We'll, we'll hold it to it.
So we can get it out there, because, because our elderly are the ones who will read the paper.
Yeah.
Or get the paper, like me. And so.
Churches.
Yeah. And churches, yeah, getting around to our churches, our Faith Alliance group, that'd be an excellent opportunity to get the message out there, for sure. Matt?
Deb, you mentioned too, the first year, it's free, correct?
The first six months.
Six months.
Yeah.
But the first six months.
Care the rest of it.
And for people to know, it's not a set route bus system, which you've gone over, but I'm going to publicize that. It's even more convenient than that, so.
Yes, but it will connect them regionally so that they can continue on and expand.
Yeah.
Right, right.
It's actually, what we, we can very comfortably call it a first mile, last mile service for those that are leaving the area on the cart bus. So we're going to help you get to the, your college class or, or to Coolidge or Florence.
Right.
And I've spoken with a lot of people that like the idea that they can get to Florence for different things they need to do at the courts and, or to the college.
Yeah, I know, some great opportunity here, so thank you. Any other comments or questions from council?
Just thanks so much, Deb.
Yeah, thank you. And to RTW too, guys, thank you.
And the city staff. I mean, you guys have been supportive of this, so Larry, so thanks for all that. Mackenzie, he's gone.
Can you do one more slide? I want to show everybody. This is the wrap, guys. This is the unveiling. So each of those different, those vehicles, this, this wrap will be scaled to each vehicle. So you're, you're, there's no missing it when we roll down the street.
Remember that.
Looks good. Looks good. Thanks, Deb.
Good job, guys. Thanks to the committee, too.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks to committee, too. Appreciate all you guys' efforts. I know I've, I've been to a couple of committee meetings, and I know you put a lot of time in it, so thank you. All right, well, let's consider an ordinance number then. Please.
Ordinance number 3388, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from RTW Management, Inc., to provide operation and maintenance for demand response public transit service, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of a contract, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 3388 as presented.
Second. All right, a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote, Gloria?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, let's make this thing happen. I-4, Resolution Number 5568. Are you handling this, Kevin?
Yes, thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a contract with CCS Facility Services LLC for janitorial services. This will be to provide janitorial services for the 16 facilities that we currently maintain within the city's building system. And the base bid amount for this contract is $257,720. It does, it also has a $10,000 allowance for any items that might come up that we need to provide additional service or ask for additional services from the contract. We did structure the contract to have two one-year additional terms if we so choose. And of course, the contractor must agree that, with that as well, to extend that contract for those additional years. We did have nine different contractors show up to our initial pre-bid meeting, and we asked each of those contractors to walk every single building throughout the city system. It was an entire day process to make sure that each contractor understood the scope that we were looking at and what our expectations were. We did have seven bids, and CCS Facility Services was the lowest bidder. Now, this is our current facility janitorial provider, so we're just going to be continuing our service with them. However, we did restructure the contract and scope of work to try and address some of the issues we were having when we went around and interviewed each of the facility managers, the department heads throughout the city and their facilities, what their needs were and, and what we maybe weren't meeting as far as those needs. So hopefully, we'll address those and continue providing the level of service that meets our needs. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no questions, then I'll call for Resolution Number, please, Gloria.
Resolution Number 5568, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from PBC Phoenix, Inc., DBA CCS Facility Services for Janitorial Services, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to CCS Facilities Services LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution Number 5568 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, move to item J. This is our boards and commissions. We have two volunteers that we just are appointing to our advisory board. This is the airport advisory board. Jenny Couch and Ted Hawkins have graciously stepped forward. We interviewed them a couple weeks ago, and they're excited to help participate. In fact, Ted is a business owner out at the airport, so it's a good fit. And since he has a business that he runs actually out there, so. Anybody have any questions about these, these nominations? Are any of them here tonight? I don't, I don't see anybody. So, but I do want to publicly thank them. Thank Jenny and thank Ted for their volunteering for these positions. These are, again, not, not paid. They are volunteer positions, and they do meet on a monthly basis. So it's, it is appreciated by the council and by your, your fellow citizens, so thank you. All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve these two nominations.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. And again, thank you to our, our two new airport advisory board members. Next, we're going to move to item K. This is a call for the 2024 mayor and council election and announce the presentation on the overview of the election process that the city clerk's office will be conducting, and the nomination packets for the 2024 council election that will be available starting September 12th of 2023. Did you want to add any, I said 2023.
Oh, I thought you said 2022, sorry.
2023.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the city's primary election will be held on August 6, 2024. And if necessary, meaning if we need to hold a runoff for either the council or the mayor position, the general election for the city will be held on November 5th of 2024. The, this election will include the mayor's position, and unfortunately, the mayor is not eligible to run for mayor.
One, one, one.
And then we have three council member seats that are up also, that will be up for this election. And the seats for the three council members are Donna McBride, Lisa Fitzgibbons, and Jeff Lavender. So there's, there are seats that will be available at this election. Any, again, any of the candidates that receive a majority vote at the primary election are declared elected without having to run in the general election. And the city council has adopted an ordinance establishing the methodology that will be used to determine who receives a majority of the votes cast. And the mayor did mention already that we are going to have the orientation that will be held here at City Hall on September 12th. Anyone interested in running for city council or just wants to know about the processes is invited to attend. It will be here at City Hall at 5:30. We will have hard copies of the nomination packet available. If anybody wants to pick the hard copy up, the entire nomination packet and process will be available online on the city's website also on, on September the 12th.
And just as a reminder, and a question slash reminder, the, the city's charter was changed in 2022 to put a term limits on the council now?
Yes.
So that takes effect with this election, correct?
That is correct. And that will limit the council members to serve.
Three terms.
Three terms or 12 years.
Three, four, three, four-year terms.
That is correct.
The mayor already has term limits, and the mayor's is four-two-year terms, so just.
That is correct.
For the public's edification.
Okay, anybody wishing to run for city council or mayor will have to have at least 342 signatures, but not more than 683 signatures on their nomination petitions. Once again, we will be using the state's equal system to allow our candidates to collect signatures. I was recently a presenter at an election training, and I talked about how successful that was for our candidates here. So we will have that also available. It's not mandatory. I mean, if everybody wants, if somebody wants to circulate their petition by hard copy, they can do that. You can do a combination of both, but that will be available for our candidates once again. Very, very important to remember that anybody wishing to circulate petitions must file a statement of interest first. If somebody starts circulating petitions without filing their statement of interest, all of those signatures will be invalid.
Valid, right.
Okay. I would be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council might have. Again, the date is the 12th here at City Hall. If anyone interested, we'll have the hard copies thereafter. Everything's available electronically. If somebody still wants a hard copy after the 12th, they can make an appointment with the city clerk's office, and we'll go over the hard copy nomination packet, and they can take that with them. We highly encourage the use of our website, at least to gather information.
And Gloria, what's the requirement to run for city office? Two years residency?
It is three years prior to the election.
Three years, okay.
For mayor, you must be at least 25 years of age.
Okay.
Must be a resident of the City of Casa Grande, three years prior to the date of the election. To run for council member, you must be at least 21 years of age, and again, be a resident at least three years prior to the election. There are other requirements. Registered voter, you have to be able to read and write Spanish. You cannot hold any other public.
You have to read and write Spanish?
English, not Spanish.
We just disqualified most of us.
You must be able to do both, just English. You must be able to, you must be able to speak English. And, and all the qualifications, again, are listed, will be listed in our website and in our hard copy.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because we've had some people come, and they haven't lived here but two years or something. So I want to make sure everybody understands there are some basic requirements.
And that is per, that is per our charter.
Right, okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, then I will, we don't need to do a roll call vote on this, do I?
Just a motion.
Just a motion to, and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the election has been called. I think all we have left is reports, and you guys already gave most of your reports, so I don't expect these reports to be too long. Anthony?
I'm good.
Donna?
I just want to mention that I had the opportunity to go to one of the shelters at the Presbyterian Church. It was just a great experience to watch the volunteers and some of the people that were there were so appreciative of the meal and the shower. And Lisa, I know, has been a champion for this, and to be there and be part of it and see what the volunteers were doing, it was, it was pretty incredible. We have a lot to be proud of.
Yeah, that's good stuff. Matt?
This Saturday's National Day of Service out at the CG Mountain.
Seven o'clock.
Seven AM.
The gun range.
Youth commission will be parking cars starting at 5:45.
Gun range, right?
Yeah, LZ Percy Shooting Range.
Yeah. Well, there's, actually, there's more than one gun range out there, isn't there?
But we're parking at the, at the Public Safety Shooting Range and then walking over to the Public Shooting Range. Just follow the cones and signs, and we'll get you taken care of.
Lisa?
Um, no, yeah, I'll be there at the Day of Service. They, you know, I wanted to congratulate, I know Danny's here, the community service team for your outstanding, your, your award, you know, for Parks and Rec at the conference you had. Congratulations to your team, you know. Saul is just so, such a pleasure to, to work with, and I know she was one of those on there. But, but congratulations to your team. You guys do a great job. And I know the BizOutlook luncheon is Friday, so whoever's going to be attending that. Mayor, you're not speaking at that this time, though, right?
I'll be there, though.
Yes. And that's it.
Bob?
Nothing further.
All right, cool. Well, Matt, I already stole my National Day of Service, so I'll abandon that. I did, yeah, I'm going to hold that one, too. Okay. So I pretty much am, am done. I, I do want to encourage any, any school super, or board members to, to reach out to me for this Arizona Mayor's Education Roundtable, because I really would like to get some board members on that. I should have been at their board meeting tonight. I don't know how long Lavender's board meeting is going to go tonight, but you can always run over there.
I'm going to go over.
So, anyway, a lot going on in town. We'll, we'll give you updates as they, as they come along. A lot of positive comments that we had at the conference last week, so it's pretty exciting for the city of Casa Grande, and I'm glad, glad to be a part of it. So it's, it's been, it's been a good run. And I want to thank my fellow council members too for all of your guys' work, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for all your work.
Well, that's it. I think that's all we have tonight, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. A short meeting, a lot longer than I expected, Larry.
I know.
I'll see you later. I'm going to try to get over and see what they got.
Tell them, tell them to get the board.
Yeah.
Mayor, you're going to be there after all at the 9/11 thing.
Yes.